...of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority. Okay, we have a roll call for the City Council.
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarion.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
And for the Housing Authority.
Authority members Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Mincy.
Here.
Perazian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Najarion.
Here.
And we have your report.
Agenda for the November 13th, 2012 joint public meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, November 8th, 2012 on the bulletin board outside City Hall. The first item or the item on this agenda is a Director of Community Development regarding proposed issuance of approximately $13 million in tax-exempt revenue bonds in support of Park Paseo, a Glendale affordable senior housing residential facility owned and operated by the Southern California Presbyterian Homes. One A is a council resolution approving tax-exempt obligations and directing certain actions.
Ms. Coachoa.
Yes, sir. We will bring up Peter Zoback to give you the overview of this item. This basically is the bond financing for a project that the redevelopment agency had participated in several years ago, quite a while ago as a matter of fact. And at this point, the principals in the project are looking forward to restructuring their debt and moving forward with the rehabilitation of the project. But that does have some implications positive, we hope, for the former redevelopment agency or Housing Authority, I'm sorry.
And that concludes my report.[65.14][65.14](Laughter). Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, members of the Council and Housing Authority, as stated, the community development staff is recommending that the City Council conduct a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, otherwise known as a TEFRA hearing, to approve the issuance of up to approximately $13 million in tax-exempt revenue bonds in support of Park Paseo, a Glendale affordable senior housing project. Southern California Presbyterian Homes is a Glendale-based nonprofit senior housing developer. They've applied for the issuance of up to the approximate $13 million in tax credits with the state of California, or they will be applying. It'll consist of private activity revenue bonds that will be issued by the California Municipal Finance Authority, otherwise known as CMFA, in support of the acquisition, rehabilitation, redevelopment of Park Paseo, which is just half a block down the street on 123 South Isabel. Park Paseo is a 98-unit affordable senior housing development project. It was developed in conjunction with the Glendale Housing Authority and HUD. It is a HUD 202 sponsored project, which means that the project receives project-based Section 8 revenues that then support a first mortgage loan provided by HUD. It's concrete structure and it was developed in 1984. In order to issue revenue bonds that will be utilized within the Glendale city limits, the City Council has been requested to conduct this TEFRA hearing on behalf of SCPH and CMFA. Section 147-F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 requires that the locally elected public body conduct the public hearing related to the proposed issuance and that the public be provided an opportunity to present arguments both for and against the issuance of those bonds by CMFA. The City Council has previously conducted TEFRA hearings for other sponsors and other projects, some of them being Tobin World, Glendale Venice Medical Center, and most recently the City Council conducted a TEFRA hearing for SCPH for their first affordable housing development project in Glendale Casa de la Paloma. Again, the bonds to be issued by CMFA for the proposed project will be the sole responsibility of the borrower and the city will have no financial, legal, moral obligation or liability with the repayment of those bonds. The city has been a member of CMFA just recently, since August of 2012. We joined, the city joined CMFA at the request of the bond issuance for the Casa de la Paloma project. The city will be in no way exposed to any financial liability by reasons of its membership in CMFA and it will not affect the city's ability to issue any bonds in the future. The one difference between Casa de la Paloma, the previous project that was issued bonds or had a TEFRA hearing for the issuance of bonds this summer and this project is that in the case of Casa de la Paloma, that project, its affordability covenants with the city expired. And in that sense, it was strictly an SCPA proposal. SCPH proposal. And this particular project, it was developed in 1984. It had 40-year covenants put in place both by HUD and the city of Glendale. So we have another 12 years to run on the affordability covenants of the original proposal. By virtue of going through this process with the state of California and issuing tax credits on it, the affordability covenants will extend out for 55 more years on that project and that comes at zero cost to the Housing Authority. So it's a worthwhile project. The project's been in place for some 28 years. There is some need of some improvements to the building, systems, roofing, painting, and some other items that the developer has identified and the tax credit bond financing will be able to provide for that. Since the project still has affordability covenants in place, there is a DDA that is in effect. That DDA will have to go through an amendment process. There are a couple of triggers that have been identified with this act by, or this action, proposed action by the developer, one of which has to do with some financial considerations that staff and the developer have been negotiating. We will complete those negotiations and come back with an amended and restated DDA for Housing Authority consideration. And with that, we have the developer here to answer any questions you might have or if there are any questions for staff.
Are there any questions? Mr. Weaver.
I'll open the hearing.
I'll open the public hearing. I don't have any cards. Mr. Weaver.
Are we approving the hearing here or the bonds and the public hearing?
You're conducting the public hearing, the TEFRA hearing, and then authorizing the issuance of the bonds.
To come. We're not doing either of those today. Excuse me. We're not doing the bonds today, but we're gonna have the hearing at which time we would then approve the bonds. Trying to read the report, it seems like we're, resolution that we're approving the issuance of the bonds, but I thought we would have to do the hearing first, get the public input, then the bonds.
Correct. That's all happening at today's meeting.
Public hearing today. Oh, not the future.
Based on the outcome of the public hearing right now, yeah.
Well, we're not issuing the bonds. We're merely blessing the bonds to be issued as a tax-exempt status.
This is the public hearing.
Without any liability or obligation.
Stupid question. Sorry.
Yeah, we gotta make that clear that the city has no liability in this.
Correct.
Issuance in any way, shape, or form.
As we've done with the past, I mean, the federal law requires that a public hearing be held in the jurisdiction in which the project exists.
But on the positive side, we are looking to pull affordable units for an extended amount of time, so certainly a benefit to the community.
Okay, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Um, um.
I'll close the public hearing.
I'll move one now that I understand it.
Second.
Roll call for the Council.
Council members Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Jarion.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Next item on this agenda is a Director of Community Services and Parks regarding program planning for the fiscal year 2013-14 CDBG ESG and Home Annual Action Plan. Two A is a council motion approving fiscal year 2013-14 CDBG program priorities, fiscal year 2013-14 proposed CDBG funding allocation plan for funding category and issuance of an RFP to the community and city departments for social services and capital improvements projects. A two B is an authority motion approving the fiscal year 2013-14 CDBG program priorities, fiscal year 2013-14 proposed CDBG funding allocation plan by funding category and issuance of an RFP to the community and city departments for social services and capital improvements projects. And a two C is a council motion authorizing utilization of Department of Housing and Urban Development's voluntary grant reduction program for repayment of the CDBG funds previously dispersed as part of the New Horizons Child Development Project in the amount of $239,856.
Ms. Coachoa.
Yes, sir. The main thrust of this report is the, is the funding allocation program for our CDBG program. As you know, we're an entitlement city. We do have the resources that come to us from HUD for this program area. And at this point, interestingly, we have two schools of thought that Mr. Duran and Mr. Carrillo will outline for you with respect to the service programming that the Council is entirely within its jurisdiction to, to appropriate. So with that, Jess, do you wanna walk us through?
Sure. Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council and Chairman Najarion, members of the Housing Authority. This is the 38th year of the federal community development block grant program and the city's receipt of CDBG funds from HUD. As Mr. Coachoa mentioned, we are an entitlement community, so we do receive our funds directly from HUD as opposed to having to go through the LA County. And of course, throughout all that time, HUD has very established guidelines for developing the annual plan for the use of the CDBG funds, which of course, we follow. And we are at the stage in that CDBG program planning process or cycle where per HUD, we have developed program priorities, we've developed a proposed funding allocation plan by funding category, we actually have a Plan A and Plan B, which I'll talk about in a minute, and we have prepared a, an RFP to issue to the community and city departments. Um, Artie, we're not ready for the PowerPoint yet. Now HUD does require citizen involvement in the development and decision-making process of the plan, of the spending plan. To meet this requirement, like most communities across the country, the City Council appoints a citizen advisory committee. And one of the basic responsibilities of the advisory committee is to review and recommend the council for council's final approval, a general funding allocation plan by funding category, which again, we'll be talking about today. Now typically, staff presents a proposed funding allocation plan based on previous input from the City Council and using the previous year as a base year and recommends the funding plan for approval by the CDBG advisory committee. And typically, the committee will approve that plan, which we then submit to the council for approval. This year, the committee approved or recommends a revised plan from the plan that was recommended by staff. As a result, we will be presenting to you two plans of what we will call Plan A, which is a staff recommended plan, and a Plan B, which is the plan recommended by the advisory committee. The basic difference between Plan A and Plan B is that under Plan A, the staff recommended plan, we recommend pre-designating three city CIP projects and making available $210,000 to the community under the RFP process. Under Plan B, which is the advisory committee's recommendation, the committee would like to pre-designate only two city projects and making available $735,000 to the community under the RFP.
What are the three city CIP projects?
The three city CIP projects are the Southern Glendale Code Enforcement Program at $396,000, our Section 108 loan payment that we have to make to HUD for the $2 million that we borrowed to develop the Essencia project, the emergency shelter and access center. Then the third project is five-
How much is the second one?
$200,000.
$298?
$198,000.
$198,000.
What's the third one?
And then the third pre-designated project is $525,000 for a Palmer Park and Maple Park Playground Improvement Project. And then, and then the balance under the capital improvement funding category of $210,000 is what would be made available to the community under the RFP. Now the committee instead recommends that we, we go ahead and pre-designate our Section 108 loan payment to HUD and the code enforcement allocation, but not to pre-designate the $525,000 for the park improvement project and instead add that $525,000 to the $210,000 and make all of that available to the committee under the RFP. And per HUD guidelines, the City Council does have full discretion to decide how much it wants to appropriate to pre-designated city projects and how much it wants to appropriate to the community for community projects. And, and again, Mr. Carrillo will, will provide more details in his PowerPoint presentation. We also have two representatives of the committee in the audience to answer questions that you might have as well. Now, the other thing that we are recommending this afternoon is, is, is to repay HUD, the $239,000 in CDBG funds that were dispersed for the New Horizons Child Development Center project, which as you know, was not successful, through a voluntary grant reduction program where funds are deducted from the city's annual CDBG entitlement in equal increments over a three-year period. So after several meetings with HUD and negotiating with HUD, staff feels that this is a viable alternative to needing to pay HUD back in general revenue funds. So HUD will, would allow us instead to deduct the funds from our annual entitlement over the next three years. So we're recommending council direction and approval to allow us to do that. At this point, I would like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Carrillo for a quick slide presentation and more details about the annual plan process.
Just a few, couple of questions. Last year, what were, what were the requests for undesignated community projects last year for CDBG programs? Approximately, doesn't have to be exact.
It was probably $500,000 or $600,000.
And then the percentages for public social services for 15%? Is that mandated by HUD?
It's a HUD mandate.
So there's no way we can increase it in any way, shape, or form?
Fortunately, not.
And the administration has mandated 20%?
That's the limit that HUD allows.
That's the cap. That's the maximum.
That's the maximum.
That HUD allows. I was wondering if we, if we reduce that to 10, can we increase the social services, services to 15?
No.
To 25? No?
It's capped at 15 is, is the allocation cap, yeah.
Can we kind of like go around it?
We try not to.[971.44][971.44](Laughter).
It's always been like that because community development is about infrastructure.
Yeah, and in fact-
Because considering, considering the way the economy is, the need for social services is even greater now than it was, you know, three, four years ago.
And I think that's what's animating the committee, saying we wanna boost.
Yeah. In, in fact, originally, in the early days of the CDBG program, I mentioned it's, it's now 38 years old. For about the first 10 years, they didn't even have a social service funding category. It was after a lot of lobbying by communities that they added the stipulation where we can spend 15% on social services.
And could you tell me about what is the priority for the city for the Palmer, Maple Park Playground Improvement Project?
The-
I will not venture to say that three times fast, but-
It's, it's, it's very much a safety concern. The playground, especially at Palmer, is in such condition that the pieces need to be replaced. So we're either able to, to fund the project with CDBG funds or, or begin to pull out play equipment until we can develop another funding source or reprioritize other projects in order to divert funds for, for the Palmer Park Playground Equipment Project.
Is it a zero-sum game at this point? That's would be all or nothing?
Not necessarily. If the council were interested in, in compromising, for example-
Putting half in there this year, half next year and doing it?
Yes.
Something like that.
According to our CIP administrator, Emil Tavosian, he feels that with an allocation of $300,000, we could at least do the Palmer Park Playground replacement, which is the, the most dire of the two. Then we could put off Maple Park for another, another year or two if, if the council was interested in-
I thought we've done a considerable amount of improvements at Maple Park. Was that, and I, and I remember the, the playground improvement was one of them a few years ago, including the, the ground.
Yeah. The Maple Park project was primarily the community center.
Okay, but not the playground?
Not the playground.
Not the grounds?
No.
The ground, underneath the playground was replaced, if I'm not mistaken? Wasn't it?
I don't remember, Councilman Manukian. Not, not in the last three years since I've been with the department, it hasn't.
But I think that points out there's at least three schools of thought on this. The Plan A that focuses on the parks as originally prioritized by council, but notwithstanding the needs in the, in the community and the economy and as reflected in Plan B from the, from the committee, and then basically splitting the baby as, as Mr. Duran has articulated, say, well, we can break up the, the, the park improvements into two years and then allocate the money as the council sees fit.
I have a question. Did I get it right that are we repaying back for New Horizons from general fund or from CDBG fund?
Normally, we would have to pay HUD back with general funds, but HUD is giving us the opportunity to instead deduct the money that we have to pay HUD back from taking it out of our CDBG entitlement every year. And so we're recommending that, that that's the wise thing to do.
That, that was HUD's, the HUD representatives, and we've met with them several times, their best effort at trying to hold Glendale harmless for the investment that, that did not pan out without any malice or prejudice against the city, but there was no way around it, even going through Congressman Schiff's office, there was no way around restoring that money back to HUD. But they are giving us flexibility about how to do that.
Did we get any funding from, from that? Did we completely lose that money? Is that completely gone? Did we get any money back from that?
Yeah.
Any way, shape, or form?
The, Councilman Manukian, the property was foreclosed and there was not enough equity for us to get any of our funds back from the sale of the New Horizons property.
I'm gonna jump a little ahead because Jess did give some background on the CDBG process, so I'm gonna jump maybe the next slide.
The advanced is right there.
And really just show the dollar amounts that are in the CDBG budget. And just to give you a little background, we know that CDBG has been one of those programs that has received significant funding cuts the last several years. Just to give you some information, we had a, proposed a 10% funding cut last year and we actually received for fiscal year 12, 13, a 35% funding cut. So that was pretty significant based on the census. Prior to that, we did have about a 16% funding cut. So overall, it's been about a 51% CDBG funding cut. So obviously, it's the, the city capital projects, park projects, and of course, the community agencies which have really taken the blunt of the funding reductions. This year, we're estimating about a 4.4% funding cut for CDBG. That's our best projection. A lot will depend on the fiscal cliff and what's gonna happen in January with the, the federal budget. So we are kind of conservative here, but we hope for the best that there'll be a hold on that and that we continue CDBG with funding that we have. Homeless ESG Funding Emergency Solutions Grant Program has not received cuts or any homeless programs the last couple of years. They have been a priority of the, of the, the House and the President and, and been able to get funding for that program. The home housing program unfortunately did take a significant cut last year. They received, I believe, a 28% funding cut from home. And again, we're, we're estimating about a, about a 3.7% cut. So significantly amount of funds are reduced for this year and that's where we're, we're having to look at alternative plans for CDBG. These are the national objectives for the CDBG program. We talked a bit about the advisory committee and certainly they make a huge role in our process for CDBG and helping us get through the proposal review process, review funding plans, and certainly take really a lot of time to review what's out in the community. And of course, you'll see right now in a minute their recommendations for a Plan B, which they have really wanted us to present to council and put that on the plate so that you can all make some revisions or decisions on that. Just to give you an idea of the needs assessment process, we do go through a needs assessment process every five years and that's that big consolidated plan where we do surveys, we do webpage surveys and, and public hearings. And again, program priorities are largely part of that needs assessment. One of the things we also looked at this year, and we're still looking at is the census data. We know that under the 2010 census, there was a, well, reduction in population in Glendale slightly. We also saw some poverty figures reduced from what was 15.6% in 2000 to 10.1%, I'm sorry, 11.1% now. So certainly, the poverty has gone down, which is a good thing. But we just saw in our census data that, that poverty's actually been reduced more on the west side of Glendale by the 134 and the 5 freeway, and then really dropped significantly in the south side. So it seemed that the poverty and low modern, moderate, moderate income population still remains in our targeted Southern Glendale area. When we look at the senior population, we noted that about 15% of the population now is 65 years and older. So, and that, that medium age has gone from 37 to 41. It's one of the highest in the county. So we are certainly an aging community and senior services certainly tends to be an area we really need to look at as we continue on with the increase in population, aging, and the baby boomers. We have approximately about 30,000 persons 65 or older and that's larger than some cities around the surrounding area.
Where'd you get that information?
This is from the US Census. This is a 2010 census data that just came out.
2010?
2010.
We have, does that, does that have the individual cities information as well, the census itself, or are you getting that?
Yeah, we're getting it from the census. I can tell you, Glendale, county's rate is 12.6% for poverty. I believe the, the senior population for LA County is about 13, 11, 12 to 13%. But certainly, we can get that data, the comparison data of the cities as far as poverty levels, which are important to CDBG, the senior levels, and of course, general overall population.
Let me ask you this, is it easy to find on the census website or do we have to do calculations?
We have to do calculations, go through the cities.
Thank you for reading that information.
Absolutely, yeah. We can give the council and staff certainly those comparisons.
Do you remember the senior percentage?
Senior percentage for-
Glendale?
For Glendale is 65 years and older, it's 15%.
15?
15. 1.5. And that's a, that's an increase from, I believe, 12 or 13, 10 years ago. So gradually, the senior population is booming, not booming, but it's, boomers are beginning to retire and certainly it's, it's a need as we've seen at the adult recreation center, the increase in, for meals and services at the senior center.
Have you seen a commensurate increase in, in the services necessary?
Yes, yes, we have.
Do you remember the poverty percentage?
Poverty for Glendale was around, let me look, 15% currently, I'm sorry. 15.6% 2000, 11.1% in 2010, and I believe it was 13% in 2007. So although the poverty rate has been going down, looking at census data and looking at census tracts, certainly some census tract remains the same. And you've got a census tract like Edison Pacific, which has 24% of the population poverty. That's, it hasn't changed too much from previous years of about 26%, 20% 10 years ago. So poverty has shifted. Certainly, we're gonna look at the census data and the block group data and see where the concentrations may be, but we know it's still Southern Glendale, not so much on the west side of Glendale, but certainly in the multifamily areas of South Glendale. This is the Plan A and what Jess alluded to, this is the staff recommendations that certainly we presented to the council members so that we could identify, you know, basically the administration's 20%, social services, we certainly wish we could have that much more. I think three years ago, we had $564,000 in social services and the city and of course the-
564?
$564,000. Again, we've seen a 51% cut in, in this, this area of funding and of course, the same amount of agencies, about the same proxy amount of funding requests. The fact that it increases because as we know, the general economy, the funds for the agencies have been reduced in other areas in private foundations and public foundations. So that is certainly a figure that hopefully will not continue to go down. The two, the three projects, again, code enforcement, the Edison, I'm sorry, Edison Pacific, the Essencia Homeless Center, and the Palmer Park, Maple Park Improvement Projects are part of the $1.1 million in pre-designated funds. Those are the ones that we've discussed and looked at possible adjustments. I'm gonna jump side by side, and this is the Plan B, which the committee has recommended to council and staff. That's to change it from three projects to two projects, giving the community- That's to change it from three projects to two projects, giving the community a better chance to apply for nonprofit facility improvement projects at $735,000, and that would increase from $210,000. That will allow us to continue to do the code enforcement program, which is funded at the same level as this year, and also fund the loan, which we do have to pay back to HUD. But the two projects that council recommends, I'm sorry, that the committee recommends are certainly the priorities, and we do have discussions on the Maple Park, Palmer Park projects already.
Let me ask you a question. So does the committee then feel that there's no safety issue with those playgrounds? They don't think that it's necessary to replace those?
I'm not sure that that's necessarily the exact reason, but I think they mentioned there could be a question about whether or not it could be delayed.
It's a question of priority.
Was the priority, the priority was to look at community facilities, since that seems to be the need. But the park projects certainly have improvements that are needed, and the lifespan of those playground equipment certainly poses a safety issue. But did we discuss more the funding amounts, the priorities, versus the exact safety of the two playgrounds?
Right, because at some point, I'd like some more elaboration about that, because if we've got a playground that's posing a safety issue to children, that becomes, I don't see how that could not be a priority. I mean, if you have a chance of injuring children, maybe that, maybe that information wasn't presented to the committee, because it wasn't presented to us in any detail. I mean, you're sort of telling us this, but you're not showing us any pictures, you're not showing us exactly why you feel that that's a priority in each park. So I would need some more, I would like to see some more details about that, so I can make a decision whether or not that's really a priority, whether it really can wait a couple of years. Obviously, we'd all feel terrible if we decided to wait a couple of years and a child was badly injured, but I'm not sure, when you say it's a safety problem, whether that means, you know, what we're talking about exactly.
Well, let me add that, on the other hand, the nonprofits and their capital improvement program, that hasn't even been presented. So we don't know if it's a beautification project, or, you know, superfluous type of things, that while they're important to that particular nonprofit, does it serve the needs of the entire city? Like these two overly subscribed parks, I mean, all you have to do is drive by Palmer or Maple, literally, any time of the day or weekend, and they're packed. So I mean, the idea that we're gonna transfer this money to proposed projects, when we know that there are two issues before the city and before the Parks Department that need improvement, I know where I'm headed on that one. Go ahead, Mr. Duran.
Mayor Quintero, Councilmember Friedman, probably the better way to describe the condition of the play equipment is that it is, it's, it's, it's close to becoming a safety hazard. It's not there yet. Recognizing that these CDBG funds do not become available until July 1 of 2013, then it takes about another nine months to, a year for planning and design and going out to bid, it would be a couple of years anyway before that equipment would begin to be replaced. So there is time, but it's at the early stages of deteriorating that we're trying to plan ahead. And in fairness to the committee, I think their argument is more along the lines of, if the city has priorities, the city has other funding sources, the city should use those funding sources. We used to have a CIP budget, we don't anymore, you know, but that would have, would have lent to their argument, and since these are community development block grant funds, that more of the funding should be going to the committee instead of the city. In fairness to the committee, I think that's how they would respond to that.
It's basically at the end of the case.
Well, that's a philosophical, we've been talking about that for a long time. On the other hand, these nonprofits have fundraising arms, they raise money, they're totally capable of providing the capital improvement projects themselves.
May I ask a question? Mr. Duran, Plan B would undesignate 525,000.
Correct.
That does not preclude those city applications to be considered by the CDBG, along with the community applications for evaluation. I mean, at this point, we don't know, presumably, we don't know what the proposals are by the community. But if we went to Plan B, by not pre-designating, it does not in any way mean that we're removing those off the table, correct?
We could have city departments be part of the RFP process, and city departments could submit funding, funding applications, just like the community organizations, to be considered by, by the committee, and to be evaluated by the committee. It's possible that, that we don't get the number of proposals from nonprofit organizations, or the committee doesn't feel that the proposals that they do receive are developed enough, and could still revert back to that Palmer Park playground equipment project, as a better project fund.
So wouldn't that be, I mean, in addressing some of Councilmember Friedman's concerns, and Mayor Quintero's, we're, you know, we know definitely what the proposal is for Palmer Park and Maple Park, but what we don't know is the extent and the nature of the proposals by the private groups. So if we go to Plan B, those will all be placed, they'll be completed and detailed projects, the CDBG would have a chance to review it, and as usually is the case, come to council for approval and adjustment, et cetera. So I'm not so, I'm not so much against Plan B, as long as those projects aren't completely taken off, it's in that manner that we can assess the merits of all the projects that are out there.
In addition to that, actually, I would like to see both these projects separated, as you were alluding to earlier, that Palmer Park is much more of a need than Maple Park at this point. So I would like to see them separated, and forward in that manner.
And itemized, too. I mean, playground equipment repair is one thing, but if there's different portions, maybe when it comes to us, priorities, you know, maybe the slide isn't so much in a bad shape, or the north end isn't bad, that would give the CDBG more flexibility, as well as council, in terms of really setting the, you know, minute criteria and prioritization that, obviously, this is what the commission does, and this is what council does, we look very closely to see what's the absolute greatest need, so. Along with that, if we could get as much detail in the itemization, that would help, I think.
Well, we're gonna make a decision on Plan A or B this afternoon, is that correct?
Plan A, Plan B, or a Plan C?
Whatever, I'm just saying, the votes, we'll see how the votes go.
We're asking for your direction.
Per Plan B gets a vote or not?
Yes, per HUD, in order to publish the RFP, we have to publish the funding allocations. So we have to decide today what your recommendation is for.
Can I just say something else while we're on this? I know we're gonna come back, and I haven't decided which way I'm gonna go on it, and keeping it all open and letting everything, letting all of the groups submit RFPs along with city projects, seems perfectly reasonable, but just an observation, from having done this for a few years, the groups, the nonprofits, come in with their board of directors, who we all know, and who are very, you know, known people in the community, and oftentimes, the people who take, use their services will come in, we've had rooms filled with people saying, "We need this, we need this," but no one comes in to speak for the children. We'll be the only ones. And so, just to be aware that there's that, you know, that there's gonna be pressure from all of those groups, they all want funding, they all need funding, they all deserve funding, they all do great things, but children also need services, and no one's gonna come and speak for them. They're not gonna come in here and speak. Their parents aren't gonna come in here and speak. They don't have a board of directors to speak for them. It's just us, so that's just an observation.
And I think where you, the staff recommendation under A, Plan A, is a reflection of what council has established this policy, in making an investment in our CDBG census tract parks. And so that's, we're trying to be faithful to that council priority, but as Mr. Duran indicates, it's within council's purview to change priorities or to alter priorities, and really, it's ultimately your call, what you wanna do.
And in all fairness, let me just add that it was through the pre-designation process, making that difficult decision by reducing funding to the private organizations, that we were able to build the Pacific Edison Park. So, I mean, just to give both sides of the story here.
I'll continue, just to wrap up, one other item we need to bring up is the repayment plan that Mr. Duran talked about, and that's regards to the New Horizons project on Maryland Avenue, and that's in your report. And since she HUD has given us some flexibility in paying back the CDBG and the CDBGR stimulus funds with reducing our CDBG entitlement funds over three years. There's been some negotiation as far as paying it back all at once, and, but we've been able to work with HUD, there's still needs of HUD approval in Washington to pay back the funds over three years. That's $79,952 per year. That will be taken out of our entitlement fund, however, that also reduces, and it's shown in the plan, the funds for the social service programs administration. So that's certainly a item we didn't expect, but for '12, '13, it would be the time that we would need to begin to pay HUD this funding for the New Horizons project.
I'm sorry, so that'll come out of this, is that, this would be this fiscal year 2013, or the, or year in?
2013, '14, yes, July 1st.
So that amount would be deducted?
Correct.
And we have no choice?
We really don't.
We gotta pay it back.
Right.
The only thing is they're giving us three years to pay it back, rather than, than a lump sum.
And just to wrap up, you know, we talked about the evaluation process, and the, I would call it a very grueling process that the advisory committee goes through, as far as reviewing 30 proposals over a weekend or two weekends, and doing all the interviews for all the agencies, they certainly take a lot of time and effort, and a full day, actually, one and a half days of interviews with the agencies. We do certainly appreciate their, their work with the staff, and their work with the agencies, and they come up with a pretty good recommended, recommended project list. We will begin that process certainly after council approval of the RFP and the funding amounts for today. We'll begin to issue RFPs and have a technical assistance meeting for the agencies, and we'll begin forwarding those proposals to the, to the advisory committee in January, and they'll have a couple of weeks to review them, and then we'll begin that deliberation process, and have those recommendations back to council, I believe, in late March or early April, and then we'll start that cycle over again. That's the last slide, and answer any questions or comments.
All right, well, I'm gonna go straight to this Plan A versus Plan B, and I support Plan A all the way. I think this freedom made a good point, in terms of kids there in both of these parks, teenagers and everybody else. For me, that money will go directly to those neighborhood parks, they will, will get the most bang for the buck, the largest number of people will use those facilities. Obviously, the Parks Department is ready to go and ready to begin the projects, even though it's gonna take time, whether we approve it today or not, it's still quite a bit of lead time before we're able to actually see the upgrades that are necessary. But for me, it's, there is no question, I feel that the Plan A is the best bet, get Palmer Park and Maple Park. Like I say, they're probably the more, the two most heavily used parks, although Pacific Edison is certainly right there. Probably Pacific Edison with more numbers, but because of the size, Maple and Palmer, it's much more intense, so I'm just not interested in opening that funding to projected, you know, project, have the, have the committee weigh in on, weigh in on the issue. Okay, I have a speaker card, I didn't know that. Efren Olivares.
Good afternoon, council members, mayor. My name is Efren Olivares, I'm a member of the CDBG committee, as you all know, and I just wanted to say a couple of words, obviously, I've been hearing your discussion, and the committee, you must know that Plan B was a unanimous vote by the committee, and the only reason is that we're not denying that there is children's safety issues, what we're saying is, you have put a committee forward to review all the proposals in the city, and to make sure that every dollar and every penny that comes to CDBG is well spent. Every year, we're getting reduced. There's about $1.3 million available now for capital projects for the nonprofits in the city, of which 90%, close to 90%, is being taken by the city before it even comes to the community. At the rate you're going with these decisions, next year, there will be no money for nonprofits, and so you won't need a committee to review any proposals. That's exactly, this is the pattern that we've been taking on for the past few years. We're not saying that we do not want to fund the parks, what we're saying is, you have been, you have been given a number of X amount of dollars, we don't know what those dollars are gonna cover, we don't know what they're for, and we don't know how they're gonna be used. I don't think you do either. So for you to pre-designate that kind of, without knowing exactly how it's gonna be spent, I think that's the committee's role, and that's the way that the committee feels about it. So we're not suggesting that they don't be pre-design, pre-designated, we're suggesting that you put it in the same process as everybody else in the city. We know what your priorities are, it's our duty to follow your priorities as the city council. And at the end of the day, you will be making the decision, so all we're asking is that you allow us to review those proposals. So I'm here for any questions you may have.
Well, it's more than a review, review and then decide on those proposals.
Correct, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, I don't think there are any other-
I wanna clarify that, you don't make the decision, I mean, the committee does not make, you make the recommendations.
You make a recommendation to-
And the city council makes the final decision.
Correct. But the recommendation we make to you will be based on an interview process and an analysis to make sure everything's competitively bid, and that we reveal the detail of it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, that doesn't change my mind. Like I say, I'm, I'm for, and the idea, I mean, remember, these are city parks open to everyone, with long hours of operation, et cetera. So for me, the money going to those two parks is much more important than whatever, you know, other projects may come before the review of the committee, or for us, for that matter. That's my opinion, any comments?
Question, if we pre-designate, do we have the opportunity to reverse ourselves later?
I'd have to ask Jess, I, the problem is, the RFP goes out with the pre-designation, so people bidding on just what hasn't been pre-designated.
Well, you're gonna have people bidding that exceed the amount that we have. I assume you could give us a list of all the additional ones on there, so even if we go with A, we would see what can fill the balance, and all the rest on down. That's why I'm asking, could we, at that point, then back off our position, we go with Plan A today?
Good point. Mayor Quintero, Councilmember Weaver, by HUD's definition, at this stage in the planning process, this is a preliminary, a proposed preliminary plan. So it stands to reason that between now and in March, when we come back to approve the final plan, there'll, there'll be variations of this preliminary plan.
Okay, then I'm Plan A, knowing I'm gonna be able to see everything else, I have the option in the future to say, "Well, let's cut $100,000 off of Palmer and Maple and put in these, I find them more important."
If I could say one more thing, historically, we've done this, and it is possible that we could approve Plan A, a number of terrific, dynamite proposals come in from the community, they demonstrate that they're, they're ready to go, they have well-developed plans, it exceeds the 210,000, and the committee feels strongly that it wants to fund this particular project, which will cost a little bit more than what's allocated, and they recommend to the council, and they convince the council, that this is one exception where maybe we can fund a little extra of the community, and a little less of the park project, for example. But again, at that time in March, you can make that evaluation and make the final decision.
That's just my point, is everybody will be here, whether they're funded or not, begging us. 16 years I've listened to the requests, all legitimate, good ones, from the, from the committee. And we know we can't fund everything, but I don't, you know, I wanna stick with what benefits the most people, but I don't mind seeing the others on the list, and if, as collective group, we feel something else, merits taking 10, 20,000 off of it, it'll be relative, A, Palmer or Maple, and what pieces of equipment, and I'd like to see a breakdown, Palmer and Maple, and the- And I'd like to see a breakdown, Palmer and Maple, and the different things that add up to the total 510,000. So I can say, "Well, then, don't do that swing. Take that off." You're getting what I mean?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Just for the record, we're not the only ones providing children's services and it's not only our playgrounds that are used by children. And a lot of the organizations in the community who apply for capital projects also serve children, which relieves actually the pressure on the city parks and city infrastructure by having these organizations provide these services. So we have to keep that in mind as well. We're not, we're not a monopoly as it comes to children's services. Second, what is, what is the overall code enforcement, code enforcement budget? The 396, do we allocate 396 every year? Is that, is that the amount?
Councilman Manukian, 396 is the current year allocation and we're proposing the same amount for '13, '14. Prior to the 35% cut we incurred from HUD last year, we were funding $420,000 a year for Southern Glendale Code Enforcement, which at that time, before the dissolution of redevelopment, redevelopment agency, redevelopment funding and the severe cuts in the home funding, I think it represented about one, one-third of the overall code enforcement budget back then. Now, I wouldn't know.
And did we not generate any savings through these cuts and personnel cuts and retirements in the code enforcement program?
Well, we did achieve savings, but those savings.
Are those reflected in this number?
No, because those, well, those savings are within the city's general funds.
Okay.
Now, the reason why we have those savings is because our revenues were down and we had to go and cut the staffing to match the resources as opposed to cutting the staffing just to free up cash to redirect in another way.
Right, but shouldn't the savings be commensurate, I mean, proportional to this funding as well as the general fund?
No.
Are all the savings going to the general fund?
Well, the $15.3 million accrues just to the general fund.
No, I'm referring to the savings from the retirements and cuts from personnel.
It just depends on.
Code enforcement.
It just depends on where those folks were.
Okay.
If.
And none of them were in the CDBG?
No, I think we had a couple of people in code enforcement. Now, whether they were in CDBG, I could not say, but if there was somebody in CDBG, for example, and we did continue to use this $396,000, 396?
Yes.
370, I'm sorry.
396.
396. We did continue to use 396 to backfill the funding for a position that was moved into the CDBG-funded position. We, in order to maintain code enforcement, you know, that is, that is a possibility that that did transpire. Now, if the council says, "No, you know, we don't want to fund as much code enforcement", that's fine, then we have to go find that funding somewhere else.
Well, that's not my point. The point is if we had savings in the code enforcement fund, it should also be reflected proportionally in the general fund as well as the CDBG requests.
I guess, what I'm, what I'm saying is that if we, if we had somebody who was doing code enforcement funded by redevelopment.
Okay.
And that redevelopment funding is gone.
Okay.
And let's say we had a retirement of somebody who was doing code enforcement through CDBG funding.
Okay.
Well, we took that person that was funded by redevelopment and slid them into the CDBG.
Were the code enforcement personnel that were being funded by different funds in different areas, is that how it was allocated? Or was it all in one fund?
We would, we would have them shotgunned out over the different funding resources.
Okay, I still feel that code enforcement should be allocated, or the savings from code enforcement and retirements and cuts should be allocated to these numbers as well. Number two, the administration costs of 20%. We have a considerable surplus in the administration fund or CDBG. I don't know whether it's a million or 2 million. I'm not exactly, I don't recall the number right now. We don't, if we don't take 20%, can we allocate the rest to the capital improvement, capital improvement project?
And spend down reserve in the interim? Is that what you're saying?
No, but it's obvious that every year we're not using the allocations because we're building up this huge reserves in the administration fund and we don't know where to spend it. We can't spend it anywhere else.
Well, and.
Councilman Manukian.
Huh?
As it relates to the CDBG program admin, that there is no reserve. We spend every single dollar at the end of every year for administration. In fact, this amount is not enough. As Mr. Carrillo alluded to earlier, we have absorbed a 50% reduction. We've cut three positions in the last two year, in the last few years. One was the assistant director position, which used to be CDBG-funded.
Was it housing?
Yeah, you may be confusing that with the housing reserve. The housing reserve does have a couple of million dollars.
In administrative funds, in administrative fees.
Yep, yep.
Can we use those reserves for administrative costs?
We can add commingue programs.
All right. Well, you know, I'm in favor of Plan B. I think, we've said it in the past, actually, and everyone should be competing for these funds, including city departments. If these parks are really in need, which I don't know that they are in need at this point, it's just a statement by, by staff, and I do respect the staff, but I would like to see more documentation on it. And at this point, I don't have it. And I would like to leave it up to the committee to take a look at the actual needs that the city has, the actual needs that these projects, the actual needs for these projects and based on, and the other projects that will be, that will be presented, and then move on from there. Because if we allocate 90% of these funds to the city to begin with, individuals in the community are not really going to apply for it. Even when they have a need, they're just going to let the need go. And if they're serving children, those children could be in trouble as well. So I'm in favor of Plan B. I think we should, we should let the committee decide which way, which way it should go. I would also entertain the concept of having a project that is actually what you're saying in a safety issue with the Palmer Park. I think we can allocate, if it's actually a safety issue, we can allocate 300 of it and then leave the rest for the committee, for the committee to do or to review.
All right, Ms. Mincy, you have it.
No, I had no additional comments.
Okay. Ms. Porosian?
Actually, I feel very sorry about the funds that we're going to repay for the New Horizons because we're, in fact, we're losing money, right? If it goes from the CDBG fund, it will affect the CDBG and I don't know which part is going to affect, be affected. That's the only one.
Prefer we take the money from the general fund, pay it back.
Pay it back, yeah.
Okay. All right, so do I have a, I mean, everyone's pretty well.
Well, let me just reiterate my concerns. I think we do need to maintain as much flexibility as possible with the allocation of the fundings. And it's something that Mr. Weaver referred to, but instead of looking at it from having something designated and then work to undesignate it, I think we should let these city projects stand on their own merits. They should be exposed to the full scrutiny and evaluation of the CDBG. And let's get their recommendation to the council. And if they are clearly in need for the safety and the welfare of our children, I'm sure the CDBG members recognize that. And even if we don't feel that they adequately recognize that, we on council will have an opportunity to reallocate as we do. The only sacred cow, as I said, that I was very firm on over the past four, five years was the Pacific Pool. I think that was a necessary, extremely necessary project to preserve funding. And in fact, if you remember, CDBG undesignated one year and I blew a gasket and screamed at my commissioner and all that. That was in private. I didn't scream in public. In public, I reiterated the real importance to accumulate the funding to make the pool a reality. So I think we're all very sensitive to the needs of the community. I don't know exactly the details of the requirements of the Palmer and Maple Park upgrades that need to be done, but I certainly trust the CDBG. I certainly trust my colleagues to have a vigorous discussion and evaluation of that along with staff's input to determine what's the best. I'll let everyone compete on a even playing field, if you will. So I would support Plan B.
Okay, do I have a motion for Plan A and then?
Well, how do we do this? I'd be moving to A and C with table with Plan A or B.
My recommendation, Ms. Weaver, is to move the item at 2A first so that you can, if you want to make a motion for 2A with option A.
I'll move 2A with option A.
Plan A.
Okay, so everybody knows what the choices are. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
No.
Najarian?
No.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Oh, it's just city council?
Yeah. First it's council.
Aye.
For Plan A.
Okay, and on 2B is the authority motion, I would encourage the non-elected members of the board to step in and express some independent thought on this. I won't tell you how to vote, but.
Is that politicking on the dais, Ms. Manukian?
I think that's the permitted kind.
It's permitted, under the rules.
Parties aren't independent.
So 2B is the item. It's the housing authority. It's a duplicate issue. So either way, if someone wants to make it with Plan A or Plan B, we can vote on that.
I'll move 2B with Plan A.
2B with Plan A. Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call for the authority.
Authority members Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
No.
Mincy?
Yes.
Porosian?
No.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Chair Najarian?
So it carries with the.
It's 4-3.
City council and the.
Then I'll move 2C.
Is the repayment.
Right, the repayment.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Move to adjourn for council?
So moved.
We are adjourned now.
For the authority?
So moved.
Second.
The authority is adjourned.
All right, let's call it.
There are items for the closed session.